Executive branches are together. It's significantly more enjoyable to be in person together, and I hope the next year we'll be able to do that. But it was very lovely to be with you all at our swearing in just a little bit less than a month ago. So, welcome to the City Council and the North Hampton School Committee Superintendent Provost and Business Administrator Nick Bernier. I want to give a special welcome to the trustees of Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School, Superintendent Lincoln Hooker and the School Business Administrator Crystal Fairman. For anyone who does not know, North Hampton holds the distinction of being the only municipality in the Commonwealth with two school districts. The trustees of Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School have attended this presentation before as guests due to what I believe was really an oversight in the drafting of our, of the annual budget policy section of the charter, which was ratified by the voters in 2012. And it did not include Smith Vocational and those for whom this joint meeting was called. And I'm extremely glad that that oversight was rectified in the Charter Acts of 2021 after our charter review in 2019. So I'm very happy to welcome the trustees and the superintendent as duly recognized participants in this meeting this year. Before we begin, I just want to give a very special thank you to Finance Director, the Finance Director for the city, Charlene Nardi, who is here this evening. Director Nardi started serving the city at the beginning of this fiscal year, so she and I are both experiencing our first budget season together. She has been working absolutely tirelessly on this presentation with me, and I'm extremely grateful to her and to all the staff in the mayor's office. So, this is our agenda for this evening. The goal this evening is to touch on these topics, starting with the basics of the budget process. We have many people newly elected to positions, myself included. So I wanted to really start us with a solid foundation. We'll be identifying the revenues and expenditures that make up the budget, discussing property taxes and how they get calculated, highlighting Proposition Two and a Half, which caps the percent taxes can be raised in Massachusetts, reviewing our reserves and how those are used and benefit the city, seeing how we stack up to our comparative communities, reviewing our revenue and expenditure trends within the city, looking at our fiscal stability plan, highlighting the FY 2023 revenue and expenditures, what is known at this moment and what we do not yet know, and reviewing the budget calendar, and then opening up for any questions that you may have. So, starting off with the budget process. As you may know, the city runs on a fiscal year, which is July 1 to June 30. The budget process is governed by Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, and our city charter ensures that each part of the government, department heads, school committees, and the executive and legislative branches each have important roles in this process. So, Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31 also states that all Massachusetts municipalities are required to prepare a balanced annual budget. So, per our charter, we are at this, this third bullet, which is the joint meeting. And then from there, the mayor initiates the budget process, working closely with department heads to maintain services and identify needs. Then the school committee and the trustees of Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School adopt and submit a proposed budget to the mayor 30 days prior to the date the budget is due to be submitted to the council. Then the mayor submits the proposed budget to the city council at least 45 days prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, and the city council holds a public hearing and must vote on the proposed budget within 45 days of receipt of that budget. So first, we're gonna talk about the city's revenue sources, which are used to cover the expenses of the city operations. First up, and the only certainty other than death, of course, are taxes. Taxes make up 70% of the city's revenue and is therefore our largest source. It includes two types of property taxation, real estate and personal property tax. It also includes our local excise taxes. Excise taxes are taxes imposed on certain goods and services and activities such as meals, hotel motel, marijuana, motor vehicle excise, and this also includes payments in lieu of taxes, also known as pilot payments, which are payments that are made by tax-exempt entities to the city to compensate for lost tax revenue. Now, let's talk a little bit about Proposition Two and a Half. Prop Two and a Half was enacted by the state in 1980, and it places constraints on the amount of property tax levy raised by a city and how much the levy can be increased from year to year. The property tax levy is the revenue a community can raise through real and personal property taxes. The levy limit is increased from year to year by a maximum of 2.5%. Then you add in any overrides and any new growth, and that gets you to the city's levy limit. So, let me, hold on, let me move you all over and find my little pointer. So as you can see, in FY 2021, the city added in $2.5 million in an override, but did not tax against it. So if you look down here. So we left $2,509,272 of excess or unused capacity, which means that we did not tax to the full limit that we could have. We left that capacity on the table as Mayor Narcoitz indicated we would for FY 21 because of the extreme uncertainty at the beginning of the pandemic. So, from year to year, you carry the levy limit from the previous year, and that is your base levy limit. So in this case, from FY 21 to 22, there's an additional $10,000, I'm sorry, amended growth that wasn't captured in 21, which was added to the beginning base levy for FY 22. So that's why this number right here and then this number are about $10,000 difference. In FY 22, you can see that the city taxed to almost the full levy limit at $70,106,847, leaving only $22,562 as excess capacity. And the $2.5 million override is reflected in the FY 22 tax rate. Here's just a list of terms for mostly about the levy limit and sort of figuring that out. I'm not going to go through all of them. I just know that some of these are, sometimes it's hard to get a handle on these, and it's helpful to have the terms. So this presentation is, will always be available. It's going to be on the city website, northhamptonma.gov, under the mayor's budget page. So feel free to ever come back here and look at these term definitions to, to understand levy limits and capacity. Our second largest source of revenue is state aid. It includes the Chapter 70 school aid, charter tuition reimbursement, unrestricted general government aid, also known as UGA, payments in lieu of taxes for state-owned land, reimbursement for veterans benefits, abatements for our older adults, offsets for incoming school choice and public libraries, and a few other state revenues, and also the Massachusetts ambulance certified public expenditures, which are Medicaid reimbursements received by the fire rescue EMTs. So those are our state revenues. Then our third largest source of revenue for the city are charges for services. These include parking revenues and departmental fees for programs, from programs such as direct department programs or services from the city clerk like dog licenses, vital records fees, or the collector's office with municipal lien certificates. It also includes revenue from inspections done by the health, building, and fire departments, and the tuition for Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School. And that is 10.7%. Inter-fund operating transfers make up about 2% of revenue, and includes the indirects we charge the enterprise funds and the Community Preservation Act. The indirects charged the enterprise funds are by specific percentages and include such things as covering a portion of the cost of employee health, life insurance, workers' comp, unemployment costs, Medicare, general property and liability, and a percentage of the general government department budgets that relate to those funds, so the auditor, collector, treasurer. Now CPA funds are collected at 3% of taxable income on the amounts above $100,000 of valuation. And the first, so the first $100,000 is exempt, and the CPA, or sorry, the CPC, the Community Preservation Committee, is comprised of representative members of other multi-member bodies in the city, the Conservation Commission, Planning Board, Historic Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, Housing Authority, as well as two at-large elected members elected by the entire city to serve on the CPC, and two appointed members. And that committee is responsible for holding public meetings and receiving applications and making recommendations to the city council, and is the city council who then votes on how Community Preservation Act funds are to be spent in the four CPA program areas. So that's community housing, historic preservation, open space, and recreation. Next, we have licenses and permits and fines and forfeits. They're a much smaller portion of the revenue picture, but an important one. These include liquor licenses, departmental permits from the city clerk or the health department, fire department and building. And then we have fines and forfeits, which include motor vehicle citations and parking tickets. So fines and forfeits are only about a half of percent, and licenses and permits are almost 1%. Now, federal revenue, that's included in the budget, makes up a much smaller portion of our revenue. Basically, these are Medicaid reimbursements for, for the schools. So in FY 21, this was $151,000, and these are Medicaid reimbursements for students who are eligible to be reimbursed for services. So that comes out to 0.08% of our revenue. Now miscellaneous revenue makes the smallest portion, and it includes PVTA, five college reimbursement, interest on investments and shared services we provide to other communities for which we get paid, which are veteran services, laser fiche and weights and measures services. And that makes 0.3%. So this is an overview of the projected revenues for our current FY 2022 budget, which is now a little bit more than halfway through the fiscal year. So this is what we are projecting the revenues will be for the rest of this fiscal year. Moving on to expenditures. This is an overview of our expenditures for FY 2022. Education is always our biggest portion of expenditures, and on this slide, it's listed at about 40% of our budget, which only includes the direct cost for the school, but we'll talk about that a little bit more on the next slide. The next biggest cost is employee benefits, health insurance and retirement, which is 20% of our expenditures. Then we have departmental budgets according to their municipal categories. Oops, sorry. Now let's just do a little bit of a deeper dive on schools as we have the two districts here with us this evening. As mentioned, the costs on the previous slide only include the direct costs, so that's the budget of the schools. But that doesn't include the city side costs that are not in the school budgets, and those are employee benefits, insurance, debt for the school, cash capital, the indirects, which include the city department services, as well as outgoing charter and school choice tuition. So when all of those are calculated in and calculated for our net school spending, which we'll go into a little bit more later, the school budgets make up about 54.6% of our budget. Though this also doesn't include capital projects for the schools funded from the Capital Improvement Plan, which was another $691,000 in FY 22. And so that's 54.6%. Now, let's talk about reserves a little bit. Reserves are different than revenues, but they're an important part of municipal finances and sometimes a piece that I think are maybe a little bit less understood. So as reserves are not guaranteed to be replenished, we generally use them for one-time expenses or emergency situations as you can't rely on them for ongoing expenses. If they are used in the operating budget, they must be done, it must be done very conservatively with great thoughtfulness and understanding the impact of that use. So in this section, I'll cover the undesignated fund balance, also known as free cash, and the three stabilization funds, general stabilization, capital stabilization, fiscal stability stabilization, and what they're used for. Free cash, it's not quite as exciting as it sounds, though it's pretty exciting. But it is certified each year by the State Director of Accounts in the Division of Local Services, DLS, after the books from the previous fiscal year are closed. It's made up of either excess revenues, so revenues that came in above the budget projections, unused departmental budgets, often because of vacancies or retirements, or funds that were left, or what was left in the fund from the prior year. And it is recommended as a best practice by the Department of Revenue that a city generate an undesignated fund balance each year that is 3% to 5% of the general fund operating budget. The city has a policy and practice of using its free cash in three ways. To build reserves by putting a portion in the three stabilization funds you see below it on this slide, to fund capital improvements, which are one-time larger expenditures, and to cover operating budget deficits if absolutely needed throughout the year. And this practice has been to divide free cash generally into thirds for these purposes, and the use of free cash takes a vote by the city council. So moving on to the stabilization funds, we have the general stabilization fund, which can be used to support projects not necessarily identified in the capital plan, but that have arisen due to unforeseen or emergency circumstances, or to supplement the operating budget in case of sharp, unanticipated revenue declines such as state aid reductions, or to cover unforeseen operating budget deficits as happen when, for example, we have a really tough winter. Or, you know, the, the best example I can think of is that year that we actually had a major snow and ice event on Halloween. So if you're already making that kind of dent into your, but, snow and ice budget in, at the end of October, there is a possibility you're going to have to go back and make up some of that. So the target is to reach and sustain this fund at 5% of the operating budget per our policy, and the use for this must also be voted on by the city council. Next, the capital stabilization fund is used solely for the funding of capital improvements identified in the five-year capital plan, which is approved annually by the council. And then the funds are appropriated per project by the city council. The target is to reach and maintain 5% of the operating budget on the stabilization fund, capital stabilization fund, excuse me. Then we have the fiscal stability stabilization fund, which was established in FY 2014 and is designed to be used in a planned and thoughtful way in future years to extend the number of years between needing to seek another operating budget override. So every year as the budget increases, which is a reality, and it's a logical one when you understand that in addition to whatever rising costs there are, there are also contractual salary increases. So ideally, revenues would increase at the same rate as costs, but as we'll see later on, particularly when we discuss state aid, that is not the reality of the situation. So here are the balances of the funds, which include the transfers that the city council just approved on January 20. So why do we need to maintain our, our financial reserves? Because they provide continuity of service and stability through unexpected and uncertain times. So financial reserves provide financial stability when there's a natural weather-related disaster, there's a failure of major infrastructure, such as a building boiler breaks, or there's a major roof leak. They provide stability for revenue volatility due to regional or national economic downturns, closure of a tax-producing industry, or changes in state revenues, and for closure and restrictions under health emergencies, which is now something we're all unfortunately very familiar with. Financial reserves provide operational stability to fund a capital improvement program that reduces repair costs and improves operational efficiency and, and the preservation of infrastructure resulting in taxpayer savings to maintain the city's AAA bond rating, which results in lower borrowing costs for capital improvements, and to provide planned contributions to the operating budget to extend periods of fiscal stability in keeping with the fiscal stability plan. So maintaining adequate reserves leaves North Hampton better positioned to deal with funding issues in difficult times and gives us the tools to provide continuity of services. This is an overview of the reserve history from the last 10 fiscal years. The city, as you'll see in FY 13, the city used a lot of its reserves in the Great Recession. And in FY 13, the city was then able to begin rebuilding those reserves. And thanks to the fiscal stewardship of former Mayor Narcoitz, the city was able to build them up over a 10-year period, and as those reserves rose, you'll see, so did our bond rating. Now, the economy can be cyclical, so you can see the impact of what happened before 2013 and how it caused the city to use almost all of its reserves. And we have had a robust economy since. So obviously, there's a lot of discussion right now in the nation about where this cycle, where we are in this cycle in the US economy. But we will, we will hope for a continued strong economy. Again, these reserves provide the city with flexibility in times of crisis and allow us to maintain a robust capital improvement plan and to maintain an upgrade infrastructure. You know, North Hampton was, and they also offer operational efficiency, right? So North Hampton was really able to handle the loss in revenue due to the pandemic better than many other communities because we had reserves to rely on, we have reserves to rely on. If you want to think of this in terms of your own household budget, where it's recommended that you have savings of three to four months of your expenses, the city currently has about two and a half months worth of savings. So we haven't quite reached the goals, but we are working towards it as long as we can keep building the reserves. So this isn't a perfect analogy because city expenses aren't divided out evenly per month like a home budget might be, but you get the general point. You know, I think it's important to realize that we're currently living in a crisis that reserve funds are meant to cushion and protect the operating budget from feeling as a massive impact. And, and I think that they have done that, and we still expect to use reserves to cover costs incurred during, that incurred during the pandemic that federal funding may not cover, and our costs have been extensive. So we'll talk about that a little bit more later. Bond rating, a little bit more on this. The city has a AAA bond rating from Standard and Poor's, which is the highest possible bond rating. Our bond rating is based on the financial stability of the city, the city's strong economy, our defined financial policies and adherence to them, and our management practices. So as you see from the excerpts from our June 2021 bond rating, which is the last bond we did, Standard and Poor's said that the city has strong budgetary flexibility and is supported by consistently positive financial operations and strong financial management conditions, and they consider our economy strong and expect it to remain stable. And so our bond rating is very important in allowing the city to borrow, but also to borrow at the lowest interest rate. So having the highest possible bond rating, we are considered the best possible risk and therefore can borrow at the lowest rate, which saves us considerable money in interest on bonds. As you can see here, we have the highest bond rating of the 10 communities that are listed that we use as comparisons. Okay, speaking of comparisons, we're going to go on to a comparison of key financial indicators. These are areas in which we compare ourselves to 11 other communities because that's often a question that people have, is how do we stack up to our sort of neighboring communities? These 11 communities, Agawam, Amherst, Chickaby, East Hampton, East Langmeadow, Greenfield, Holyoke, Longmeadow, South Hadley, Westfield, and West Springfield, were chosen because of their proximity to us, and they are either of similar size, have similar staffing patterns, or a comparable population. These communities have been used for the last nine years in these comparisons. So the rankings are where we fall can change over time, so reviewing these annually gives us a good snapshot of where we are. If a community is not included, such as on the previous bond rating slide, it's because that information of that community was not available on the mass.gov website. So our first comparison is, as you can see, at a tax rate of $17.89 per $1,000 of valuation, the city of North Hampton in FY 22 is in the lower half of the group for residential tax rate. The Board of Assessors makes a presentation to the city council annually for the council's tax classification hearing, after which the council votes to set the tax rate. So the council voted and set this rate on November 4, 2021. The city of North Hampton has a single tax rate, also known as a factor of one. Out of the 12 communities, we are the third lowest for commercial tax rate, making us attractive for businesses. These first five here all have a split tax rate. So setting the rate and deciding whether it will be single or split is another responsibility of the city council. Average single-family home values, here we see what we certainly, I think, know and are feeling in North Hampton. Our home values remain very strong here. And that is reflected in the average single-family tax bill, which is calculated by taking the average family value multiplied by the rate. So as you can see, we are ranked higher within this group because of our higher home values, but are under Longmeadow and Amherst. New growth value, this is the value of new construction, land divisions and building permits. FY 2022 new growth is a reflection of projects that were done between July 1, 2020 and July 1, 2021. This new growth shows that people are investing in North Hampton, which is a positivity driver for our local economy. You'll see when we get to the projection section that what has been a strong component of the first part of the pandemic recovery has slowed a little bit. So we'll talk a little bit more about this later. But as you can see, we are leading in this comparison with total new growth. The new growth value on the previous slide then generates new growth of $1.1 million that increases our levy limit. This is looking at the general fund revenue by source. This slide shows how the communities compare using our top three revenues, so taxes, state aid, and local receipts. As you can see, the city of North Hampton, which is here in this kind of teal, receives less state aid than all the other communities except for Longmeadow. And it shows that we have greater local receipts than all of the other communities, meaning we are succeeding in offsetting our lack of state support with other revenue other than property tax. However, with those local receipts, when those local receipts are impacted from an event like the pandemic or a downturn in the economy, the city feels that impact greater than the communities who rely less on local receipts because they have more state aid. So we are considered a minimum aid community because of property values, income, and demographics, which is why we receive less state aid. The state aid calculation has students counted into it, which reduces income levels of a community. And that is why Amherst has greater state aid than we do because they have the university and more colleges than we do. So they have greater state aid, though they have significantly higher property values and a higher tax rate. Next, we will review the trends we are seeing for some of our revenues and our expenditures. These are some of the revenues we're going to go over. And again, here's the pie chart showing our FY 22 revenues and the percentages that make up the total. So new growth, as mentioned before, our new growth is from construction, land subdivisions, condominium conversions, and property renovations. It is a reflection of investments and growth within our community. In the last five years, we have seen quite strong growth. However, we need to be a little bit cautious and careful in projecting the future. So the development at Village Hill has been a really big part of this growth. And those projects, the final project there is now wrapping up, so we're not expecting new growth there at Village Hill in the future. This represents the 3% marijuana excise tax that we receive from the state on a quarterly basis. As you can see, we received only two quarters in FY 19, which is when the industry first opened. Fiscal year 2020 was our highest year at 1.6 million. FY 2021 was down slightly at 1.3 million. And FY 22 remains to be seen where we'll end up. And FY22 remains to be seen where we'll end up. As more and more retail shops open in neighboring communities, as well as when neighboring states begin retail sales, we may see our market share decline further. So this is still a very volatile industry. So it's something that we have to keep a close eye on, and we need to be extremely careful about estimating this as a revenue source because as we've seen, it has started to decrease. Hotel motel and meals tax. In FY21, you clearly see the effect of the pandemic and how these revenues took a serious hit. In FY22, we are running ahead of our conservative budget projections, and we're seeing a bit of a rebound, which is hopeful that we don't yet know the impact of the COVID variants that we've had in the fall and the winter. Parking. Parking revenue was impacted by the pandemic in FY2020 as well as FY21 because we collect these revenues monthly. In FY2022, we have been running ahead of a cautious budget projection and are at about 80% compared to FY19 revenues. So we're seeing a slow rebound to prior year levels, though again, we haven't yet seen the full impact of the Omicron surge yet. And there is some thought or concern that remote work and less traffic because of how habits have formed and changed in new ways in terms of buying and other practices may keep those revenues from ever returning to pre-COVID-19 levels. Building permit revenues were down slightly in FY2020, but remained fairly strong in FY21 with many home projects that were being done. We have estimated a slight decline in FY22, which may continue into FY23 until access and cost to supplies are better. As we know, there are supply chain issues and costs have really kind of gone through the roof in terms of building materials. Okay, state aid. So this chart right here is one that has had a really big impact on me for years. You might wonder why. It's kind of boring. It's maybe the least visually interesting one. As you can see, it is a fairly flat line. A handful of years ago, when I started to really understand what it meant, I just, I really couldn't stop thinking about it, and it has frustrated and motivated me ever since. I printed it out. I brought it to presentations and speaking events. It's something that I reference often, and I've been known to sort of whip it out of my bag and show it to people when talking about state aid. So this shows net state aid to North Hampton over the last 20 years. It excludes offsets for school choice, which go directly to schools, and offsets for libraries, which go directly to the libraries. So as you can see, not only has it remained relatively flat and hovering in the around $10 million range for the last 12 years, but it went down significantly from where it was in 2002 at around $13.5 million. So this is not adjusted for inflation. It is not a relative value. These are actual dollars. As we know, expenses have not remained flat. So what this means is that we get significantly less of our state tax dollars than we did 20 years ago, and we get less for our state tax dollars because they have remained stagnant. What it also means is that there is increasingly more pressure on local property revenues as we have to make up the difference. And those revenues are capped at 2.5% under Prop 2.5. So we have now seen the governor's budget proposal for FY23. And while the lieutenant governor announced a 2.7% increase for unrestricted general government aid, the net state aid, so that's the state revenues minus the state charges, are coming in at 1.8% for FY23, so not even reaching 2.5%. Now, we're going to talk about expenditure trends. The biggest expenses in our budget are health insurance, retirement, other insurances, workers' comp, and our education expenses. Here again is a reminder of what the FY22 expenditure pie looks like. So health insurance, which is 12% of our budget, is projected at $12,197,937 in FY22, which is up from FY21 by about 5.2%. So in '21, it was $11,591,432. It won't be news to anybody that health insurance continues to go up. Retirement. All city of North Hampton employees excluding licensed school staff participate in the North Hampton Retirement Board contributory retirement system. Prior to 1998, there were no regulations for retirement contributions, and therefore municipalities just contributed on a pay-as-you-go basis. However, in '88, the law changed and required that we not only pay for the current retirees, but put away and fund for future retirements. So all retirement plans must be fully funded by June 30, 2040, and our system is targeted to be fully funded by fiscal year 2037, so three years ahead of schedule. Other insurance costs to the city are workers' comp, general liability, auto insurance, police and fire, workers' comp, and property insurance, all of which, as you know, generally go up as well. Chapter 70 is state aid to public elementary and secondary schools to support school operations. Chapter 70 also sets a minimum spending requirement for each school district and a minimum requirement for each municipality's share of school costs. So this slide shows the budgets for the two districts. We have in blue Smith-Vocational Agricultural High School and in green, the North Hampton Public Schools. And this is over a 10-year period. So you'll see the increases over this 10-year period. This slide shows the proportion of the budgets that are chapter 70 compared to actual school spending by the city. You can see again how flat the chapter 70 aid is while the city portion is continually rising. Again, it highlights the pressure on the community to continue to provide our high-quality education without any increase in state support. Our local support of our schools is vitally important. And you know, I really think that it is a defining quality of our community. And I believe that public education is one of the most important services that a municipality provides. But the state's diminishing support, and it is diminishing since flat means it is not keeping up with the cost of education, I hope, is evident in these slides. Just to give a little definition of net school spending, which can be confusing. So the foundation budget is equals, also known as net school spending, equals our local contribution plus the chapter 70 aid. So the foundation budget is adjusted annually to reflect changes in enrollment, demographics, inflation, geographical wage differences, and wealth factors are part of the formula. Required net school spending is the same as the foundation budget. The community must meet required net school spending with its contribution plus chapter 70. Here we see that required net school spending, which from the previous slide is significantly more than the stagnant chapter 70 state contribution, how it is compared to actual school spending for the North Hampton Public Schools. So this slide illustrates the required net school spending, which is in blue, versus the actual net school spending for each year over the 10-year period. So the city has spent more than required, and that amount has continued to keep growing. And here it is for Smith-Vocational Agricultural High School. It's a bit more of a complicated history here. However, we are committed to meeting and exceeding net school spending as the city has done since FY16. Now, let's talk a little bit about the fiscal stability plan. Here's the history of the contributions and uses of the fiscal stability plan since its inception in FY2014. In FY14, we used some of the raised funds from the tax override to fund the plan with $774,090. In FY15, we contributed another $1.2 million, that's here in the brown, to that amount from the previous year that it was started with. And then we continued to contribute as we could in FY16 and '17 and '18. Then in FY19, this was the first year that we had a shortfall in revenue, and we used $277,850, that's what's represented in this blue here, to fill for the budget, to fill the gap. In FY20, we used $775,874 to fill that budget gap. And then in FY21, we used $411,367. As you'll notice, later in those years, we used free cash when it was certified, which generally happens in mid-November, and we added funds back into the account. Another override was passed in March 2020. But as we have discussed before, it wasn't used in the levy limit in FY21. It was in FY22. So on January 20, the city council voted to put $500,000 of our free cash into the fiscal stability fund. You see that right here. And that extra $3,753 represents the interest added to that account. Now, let's talk about FY23 revenue and expenditure projections. So as highlighted in the earlier slides, these are the top three revenues of our budget. As we go through, I think you'll see why we need to be cautious in our projections. As with the 2.5 automatic increase and a conservative estimate on new growth at $750,000, we know that we can raise within the levy an additional $2,487,23. So that is the amount to which we can raise the levy. This might be a little bit hard to see. This is the cherry sheet. The governor's budget was released last Wednesday. Per that budget, the city of North Hampton's net state aid, so that's the state revenue again, minus the assessments, which are the payments back to the state we need to make, our aid is increasing $190,656 or 1.8%. These numbers can change as the state works through its budget process, but this increase is very, very low, particularly in light of the fact that state revenues were pretty robust this year. In looking at the details, chapter 70 up here went up about $83,000, a little bit more than $83,000 as we expected. However, charter school sending tuition down here, which is paid out of city funds, went up $412,679. So from the perspective of education state aid, under the governor's budget, the net increase is a whopping $995 or 0.01%. So as you can see, state revenues are coming in increased by $370,553. However, charges are increased by $369,558 for the net increase of $995. So the school receives incoming school choice tuition, but the city is responsible for paying the school choice and charter sending tuition. So as a preliminary projection, we anticipate revenues to increase by about $4 million. So stated revenue is up by that modest $480,000. This includes the offsets of incoming school choice and libraries. Again, it remains relatively flat, as we pointed out in the 10-year comparison. So this is different than the 508 number because this $480,000 is the revenue. The net numbers before didn't include the offsets, which get you to the 508 from the previous slide. We are conservatively predicting our local receipts to continue to rebound, though we're mindful that the delta and then sharply the Omicron surge may show a slowing of the rebound before it picks back up again. Again, we've been seeing meals and hotel motel and parking rebound a bit this year. We're at about 90% in hotel motel and meals taxes and about 70% in parking. If we compare FY22 second quarter revenues to second quarter FY19 revenues, which we are using as the benchmark as the last full fiscal year before COVID-19 impacts. Unfortunately, we are seeing some permit revenues dropping. One example is in building permits, which again is most likely a reflection of the backed-up supply chain and the steep rise in building costs. So therefore, we are conservatively projecting those lines, but we will continue to refine them throughout the rest of the budget process and as we get more data. This is another look at the pie chart and how FY23 projected preliminary revenues make up the budget. At this point, we are not projecting the use of the fiscal stability fund. And these are projected expenditures. What we know for expenses are that the retirement contribution will increase by $281,418. Again, the state is requiring that all retirement plans must be fully funded by June 30, 2040. And our plan has us reaching that by fiscal year 2037. We are proposing a $25,000 increase to our OPEB contribution. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is general health and life insurance for retirees. This is a future liability for the city. And while not specifically required by the state yet, it is important for the city to make yearly progress towards fully funding this liability. And it also helps maintain our bond rating. We are proposing an increase in the use of cash capital over last year, the amount of $41,000, towards the FY23 capital plan, as we mentioned earlier from the governor's budget. We have an idea that the sending tuition of charter and school choice and charter's projected to go up, school choice down. And I have committed 4% increases to both of our school districts for FY2023 as they are already working on their budgets. So what we know is this leaves just under $1.7 million for the things we don't yet know. And those are some big items, namely health insurance, which was $12 million for the current budget, or 12% of the budget, and other insurances such as property vehicle, general liability, and employee liability. So a 5% increase. Again, the increase from '21 to '22 was 5.3 or 5.4, I think. So a 5% increase in that, another 5%, at least 5%, would equate to $635,000. And then we have departmental increases and the impacts of collective bargaining on all units. So those are the things that we don't yet know what they're going to be. So let's talk a little bit about funding resources to address the pandemic. COVID-19 has impacted the city budget and our lives since March 2020, and we're now entering the third year. Over the last two years, the city has accessed federal funding to address the impacts of an aid in the recovery of the pandemic. None of this is part of the budget, and they cannot be used for the general fund, but I wanted to quickly highlight them. Up top, we have CARES Act funding. So this was passed in March 2020, and the city received and spent $2.5 million of this federal funding. These numbers only reflect the funding that's been tracked through the mayor's office. So the schools received funding through ESRA funds, and other departments received grants. So this is just the money that has come through on the city side, not including those. And next, we have Federal Emergency Management Agency funding, the FEMA funding. So when the nationwide emergency was declared in March 2020, this enabled FEMA funding. The city has spent and submitted for reimbursement approximately $1.1 million in COVID-19 expenses for FEMA funding. And that funding is targeted to end in April 2022. We have not yet... We have not yet gotten that reimbursement, so it is not a guarantee. And there's still a possibility that we might have to use reserves to cover those pandemic costs if FEMA rejects all or a portion of those applications. So we are waiting to see what's going to happen with those applications that we have in for FEMA funding. And then we have the American Rescue Plan Act. So, this was the March 2021 Act, and the city will receive $21.7 million over two years for use in four categories, for broad categories, responsive public health emergency, payment for essential workers, recouping lost revenue, and to make necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband. And we are having a community conversation about that right now, and, you know, looking very carefully at any other federal money that might be coming as we make a community decision on how we're going to spend those funds. So, what does this mean for the FY 23 budget? So, a lot is still unknown, such as the impacts of the ongoing pandemic and what the increases in some of our larger expenses are going to be. But what we do know is that North Hampton's going to continue to maintain a competitive residential commercial tax rate compared with neighboring communities. Single-family home values will remain strong as the city continues to maintain high-quality municipal services, our schools, and safety, and public works and public health. New growth will continue to provide additional levy capacity in FY 23. The preliminary estimate again is $750,000. And we are carefully looking at indicators for new growth. Local receipts such as parking, meals, tax, and hotel motel are slowly rebounding. Again, although the recent rise in Omicron cases may still have an impact, and we're watching that. The negative impacts of the coronavirus health emergency will continue to be addressed. And inflation and supply chain issues will increase costs and impact departmental budgets. We are already seeing that. I'm sure you're all seeing that in your own lives, and the city is certainly seeing it with our own rising fuel and energy costs. And so the city will continue to be conservative in budgeting and management practices. So, we're almost there. We're going to go over the budget calendar. Again, here we are, February 1st, at the joint meeting. Next, the next deadline is March 2nd, the deadline for the five-year capital improvement program to be submitted to the city council. April 17th, 2022 is the deadline for the North Hampton Public Schools and Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School to submit their adopted budgets to the mayor. May 16th, 2022 is the deadline for the mayor to submit proposed City of North Hampton FY 23 budget to the city council. And then June 30th is the deadline for the city council to hold a public hearing, by which to have held a public hearing, and to vote on the proposed 23 budget. And that brings us to the end of our presentation. Let me escape out of here and be able to see your faces. Okay. Let's see, are y'all still with me? See a lot of you. Excellent. All right, everybody. Thank you for, that was kind of a wonky deep dive. I hope it was helpful. So again, hold on, let me, oh, I need to stop sharing, don't I? Okay, there we go. Now, I can see you, and you can see me. Okay, now that I can see you all, I can, I see Councilor Nash, Council President Nash.
Thank you, Mayor. That was a really wonderful presentation. Well done. And I just want to say, I too appreciate that graph around state aid. It's very helpful in explaining to people as to, you know, why we need to keep going back to, you know, our property owners to say we need more revenues every, you know, every year. And that is, that's the biggest factor right there. So I really appreciate that. This may not be on your radar, this question, but I know that Mayor Narcoitz had explored pilot programs in the past. And I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on stepping into that in the next year? I know you've had a very full schedule the last month, but just, I'd be interested in getting your thoughts on that.
Yeah, you're right. I had not planned to talk about this this evening. But actually, you know, as you know, Smith College just made a generous gift to the city of North Hampton of $500,000 over the next three years. So that, you know, they would be one of the prime people we would go to to ask for something like a pilot. And Mayor Narcoitz did his darndest to do that. So, you know, I'm very appreciative of that gift. I'm also appreciative of the nonprofits who do pay pilots. Generally, they are, they pay them on property that they have purchased from the city, and then enter into an agreement to pay a pilot. So I will certainly think about that more, but am grateful for the funding that we're getting at the moment.
Well, sorry to put you on the spot like that. But I do know that Mayor Narcoitz worked long and hard on that, and that, you know, that some of the revenues that you spoke to were, you know, the fruits of those efforts. But that, anyway, thank you.
You're welcome. There was a request to explain pilot a little bit more. So pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes. I touched on it a little bit in the presentation, but that, those are payments made by nonprofits, so not tax entities that don't pay taxes, that are sort of a recognition of the resources that they do use. And so it's a, they are voluntary payments that they make to sort of contribute to some of the city resources that they use, even though they don't pay property tax on them. Okay, you can, I already see that we've got this cultural difference happening, which is so interesting and I love, right? So school committee members raise their Zoom hands, and city councilors raise their actual hands. So I'm going to try and bounce back and forth between you all and get your different ways that you do things. Again, it's one of the things I love about everyone being in the same place. It's so much fun. Okay, I think, member, school committee member Stein, you are next.
Thank you. I have a question about the bond rating, and, you know, you sort of did a good job at explaining the role that reserves play, and sort of the way in which the bond rating has increased over the years. And I thought you mentioned, I might have been mistaken when I heard, but that the last bond was issued in June? Was that what you said? The question really is, you know, could you tell us a little bit more about the city's current debt situation? Are we using sort of, are we borrowing sort of for revolving capital all the time? Is it mostly limited to projects? And, you know, the AAA is great, but do we have any sort of looming bond measures that we're really going to have to raise capital for that's really helpful for? So that would be great. Thanks.
Yeah, sure. And I'm going to lean on our finance director, Nardi, to help answer that as well, who has a good handle on what we have bonded for. And also, was it June 21 was the last bond? That was that date on there?
Yes. Yep. So, hi, everyone. I'm Charlene Nardi. For those that I have not met before, I am the finance director. To answer your question, the city does bond annually. It is for a lot of one-time. It has not been for operating budgets. However, we do bond for paving, usually every year. This year, we will not be bonding. Well, I should take that back. I shouldn't state that. So annually, we bond. It's usually in the spring, and it is usually for projects, and usually for paving for the DPW.
And just to sort of, we are considering whether or not to bond for paving largely because of what we were just talking about before, is that the prices, you know, there's been such an increase in the cost of materials, labor, trying to get labor. So, we are looking at whether it makes sense to spend money there right now, because we will get less for our money based just on the current climate that we're seeing right now. Okay, so this is also, this is another fascinating thing, watching like who, so it looks like city councilors are adapting to the school committee members' approach and raising their Zoom hands, except I'm going to go to Council LeBarge right now, who is raising her hand the way that she does it. So Council LeBarge. You're muted, though, Council LeBarge.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you for the really great presentation that you just did this evening. It was very well detailed, and I'm hoping that the residents in the city are watching this tonight, because I felt that it was explained very, very thoroughly. I also, I have had some people come to me, Mayor, and talk about how we have the charter school tuition and the school choice. Now, say you live in North Hampton, and you're a taxpayer, you own your home and everything. If you make a decision for your children to go to another school, why is not transportation included with that? We have some people out in the rural areas who have made decisions to go to school choice, but they have to go out of town to bring their children to school. Could you explain why they're traveling? They wouldn't have transportation included?
So I think these are not city decisions. I think they're state decisions. But I would be happy to ask Dr. Provost, or perhaps Nick, if they would like to weigh in and can shed more light on that. Or if, Dr. Provost, I see you raise your hand. Oh, you can't unmute. All right, we need to make Dr. Provost a co-host. Apologies.
Thank you. Mayor's absolutely correct in that answer. The issue of transportation in charter schools is a matter of state policy. There is transportation and a transportation obligation if you have a charter school located in your community to transport students from the community to the charter school. In our case, none of the charter schools are in North Hampton, so there is no transportation provided. But for example, Hadley, where one of the charter schools, where some of our schools, our students attend, in East Hampton, both do provide transportation for residents of their towns to the charter school, because the charter school is located within their border.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Provost. School committee member Levy, please.
Thanks so much. I echo Councilor LeBarge's gratitude. I found your presentation, Mayor, incredibly clear and very, very helpful in understanding the finances of the city. So thank you. My question is about reserves and the reserve funds. I believe I heard you say that you don't have a goal for what those funds should be at this point. Is that correct?
Are you asking a goal for what percent they should be, or what they should be used for?
For what percent they should be.
The goal, I mean, the goal according to our policies is 5% each. What I said is we haven't quite reached that goal, and I'm hopeful we can keep working towards that goal. You know, we saw what happened in the recession and how those just got depleted. I'm hopeful that we will still continue in a place where we can try and reach that goal if possible. But, you know, I think our bond rating is an indicator that we, you know, we are doing well in terms of this, and also just sort of the stability that I think we've felt during this really tough time in terms of services, I think is another indicator that we were sort of handling that as well as we can. We always wish there was more.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So, in looking at the chart where since 2013, they've been going up and up and up and up, the idea is once we reach that 5%, they'll level out.
Yes, then they would level out, yes.
All right, great. Thank you so much. My final question is also in echoing what somebody else has talked about in terms of that graph in state aid, which also I found pretty infuriating. I guess my question to you is, given how many times you've pulled it out and shared it with folks, what, especially thinking of our opportunity to model for the public, what do you see as our opportunities short of lobbying with our state representatives to shift the funding formula for North Hampton?
I mean, I think that that is our, you know, I know that our state legislators are really well aware of this, and it is something that also infuriates them and that they work really hard on it. So, I mean, I think we just really need to keep pushing, and we need, every opportunity we can, we need to make sure that they, but also others in the state sort of recognize the impact of that level funding and how it has, you know, what it means for our community, and it means for, you know, the continually added commitment that we need to make to make up their lost revenue. So I don't have an easy answer for you. If I knew exactly how to fix it, I would be doing it right now. But I think, you know, I guess I just ask all of you to continually push with me on this. And I am glad that you're all as impacted and infuriated by that chart as I have been. And we just need, you know, I would like us to just keep beating that as a message to the state. And, you know, we also can really hope that with a new gubernatorial administration, perhaps we will maybe see some changes in that. You know, we can, we can hope that if we have a, in my view, I would think a Democratic governor and a female Democratic governor in particular, maybe we could start to see some improvement on that front would be my fervent hope. Okay, Councilor Mayory.
Yes, thank you as well for that wonderful presentation. And I share the graph anger. And now I'm really wondering what the state kind of, how it shifted its priorities at that time, and stay in where that money actually is going and all that. So I find that kind of interesting and enraging. But my question is, I know it's not part of the budget presentation tonight, but I am curious about the ARPA funds and how they, I'm trying to picture how they're going to interact with the budget and interact with city council, and your kind of public process around that, what you plan in terms of public engagement or prioritizing, and maybe the timeline a little bit. And if you're going to do a presentation on ARPA separately, we could cover that then, too.
We will definitely be covering ARPA, I think, a lot for the next two years. But, you know, I think, so, you know, I've already sort of said what the process is going to be. I feel like it's not moving as quickly as I would like it to, or maybe, that's not true, as quickly as I had indicated it might. And a good part of that is, we are still waiting to find out what the state is going to do in terms of those funds, and waiting to see about other federal funds. What I want to do is maximize those funds, right? So I want to be careful about committing certain, our ARPA funds for things that could potentially, we could use additional funds for in the future. So, but I'm still working together, working on pulling together a committee of residents and including councilors who will, you know, look at the public process that we have already done with the survey, and then start a whole sort of additional process in terms of public meetings and working together to just sort of generate the community consensus and figure out how we can use those funds. Everywhere possible, one to protect the general fund and the city tax dollars from one-time expenses around the One, to protect the general fund and the city tax dollars from one-time expenses around the pandemic, but also just to identify some of the things that we know are really important to the community. But, you know, we're, another thing that we're still, we're still very much in this pandemic and we just have seen a whole, but, you know, we've just had some new expenses around it, around, you know, setting up other testing and mass and providing services during this last surge. So we want to be very careful that we have funds to cover those expenditures.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Foster.
Thank you. It's kind of fun to do this, the school committee way with the raised virtual hand, especially with so many faces on screen. Thank you for that really helpful presentation as well. You know, it's always so grounding to start the, the budget season with that really comprehensive look. Counselor Maori touched actually on the question I was going to have, but mine was slightly broader. Something that I, I know we talked about when we were both counselors, and I just want to raise the issue. You know, it can be, something, feedback I heard from constituents as well is that it's challenging to get the budget, you know, so close to public hearings, you know, to the point where the council is, is, it's a fairly condensed process on the other end. And I don't know if you envision over the years, any shift that would invite in a different kind of, a potentially more public input into the budget process. And I was going to dovetail that or include that with the public input into the process around ARPA funds, which, which you just talked about, but around the standard budget process as well.
Um, yeah, you know, I mean, I guess one thing, as I'm sort of learning more about building the budget, one thing I'd sort of really encourage people to look at is compare a handful of budget years. And, and plain recognizes the budget doesn't really change that much in terms of content. You know, a city government is really people, right? And the vast majority of the general fund is for personnel. And so there's personnel and the other components are operating ordinary maintenance and something called other than ordinary maintenance, but personnel is really the bulk of it. So the goal is to really, is to maintain services, which is really no small feat, keeping in mind what, you know, we've just spent a lot of time talking about this night, that we're restricted from collecting more than 2.5% from a previous year. So, um, you know, I'm always happy to have conversations and, and, and have people be, you know, contribute to, to their ideas in the conversation. I just, it's not, there's, it's not where some of the more interesting expenditure, the general fund's incredibly important, right? But it's not where some of the more interesting expenditures happen, I think. So, um, you know, I'm happy to talk about it more, but there's just not, again, we're trying to maintain our services as much as possible. So there's not a lot of sort of leeway in terms of, I mean, I wish there, if we had more money and we could have conversations about additional things, that would be amazing, right? But as we've just kind of gone over extensively, we are trying to figure out how to fund the things that we know are increasing. So, you know, it's not the most interesting conversation is kind of the upshot, right? There's not, just not a lot of leeway necessarily. Um, Member Sarah K. Cox.
Um, I have a little bit, a kind of more, I don't know, introspective question. I'm curious, Mayor, as you were putting together your first budget, what was kind of the biggest surprise to you or the biggest learning that you had as you were putting it together? And then I think maybe another question that you probably don't have an answer for is, do you, you know, what do you imagine, or maybe what are your goals for what the, the city budget looks like in, say, three or even five years? Or let's just say by the end of your term.
Well, I can't answer your first question because I can't put together my budget until you give me your budget. So I have not fit together the city budget yet. We're not at that point. So I can't, I can't yet tell you what's most surprising.
I misspoke. I meant the budget projections.
Oh, the budget projections. Um, most surprising. Uh, let's see. I mean, I guess just looking at just the, the raw impact of something like, you know, something we know is going to, or we don't know, but we often assume is going to increase, like health insurance, right? And just seeing how right off the bat that, that really takes a chunk of what we know will, will be, you know, additional funds. So I think that's, that was maybe sort of the most, that's sort of the biggest wake-up call of like, oh, wow, okay. This is, there's just really not a lot of, you know, again, when we don't get any increase from the state or barely any, and we know that things are increasing more than 2.5%, there's just really a very small amount that's left over after we, you know, project all of our, our obligations. So I would say that's it. Next three to five years, I mean, you know, a lot, that's also really hard to answer because, again, you know, you can, you can probably hear the worry in my voice in terms of, but in terms of like the economy, cycles of the economy. And, you know, I, I, I hope we're going to keep going this way, but, you know, we're all seeing indicators and things that are a little bit concerning. So, you know, if, if I would, if we could keep continuing and we could keep continuing with robust new growth that we could, so that we can have our levy limit increase in a way that we can meet most of our obligations, then, you know, I want to try and keep funding all of our services at levels that are, are what the community wants to support. And always, of course, schools, I would, I would love to keep supporting the schools at levels that are higher than, you know, the minimum, which is what we've been able to do. And, and as I've indicated, is something that's really important to me. So, you know, I, I hope the rest of the economy cooperates and that we can keep moving in that direction. Um, Member Agna.
I, I'll just say briefly too, thank you for this presentation. It's very illuminating, if not depressing. But I, I wonder about the status of the ballot question about, I mean, it was referred to as the millionaire's tax, like that wasn't able to get onto the ballot because of the mistake with the two questions on it. Is there a possibility for that to come in or be on the ballot and therefore perhaps bring us more revenue?
Oh, boy, from your mouth to the ballot. I, I believe that, I believe so. Anyone, okay, I'm looking for hands. Who's got an update for me on this? None of you. Hold on, let me scroll. Um, oh, Paula, oh, hold on. Do you have an update on this?
I'm a member, I'm a member of Mason and employee at the high school, but I do know it is on the ballot for November 2022.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for telling us. That's great. So, yeah, we, and then we just, you know, we need to push to make sure that any of those funds that are raised get allocated in a way that benefits, education benefits us, right? That's sometimes the, the concern is that sometimes revenues get raised in ways and then we still don't see any of it, which is incredibly infuriating. So.
And that's what happened about the ballot question in the first place is because it was trying to be earmarked. But if it isn't earmarked, then we're, we don't know whether it will come to us.
Right. But again, we, our state legislators, you know, are incredibly hardworking and will, will, will fight their hardest to, to make sure that we see it here in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I am, I'm scrolling and looking to see any other hands. And I don't, I'm just making sure I'm not missing anybody. I don't think I see any other questions. So if that is the case, I just want to thank you all so much. Thank you for your kind words and for making me feel good about this being my first time presenting to you all. I'm glad that you felt like it was helpful. You know, we, we really tried again to say, you know, to, to lay a solid foundation. You know, these are, these are, these are not easy concepts, a lot of them. There's a lot of jargon. And so I know that I always found this presentation really helpful and just really wanted to kind of give you as much information as possible. And again, you know, this presentation lives on the mayor's page under budgets. So you can always go back. This is one of the, I would go back very often to this presentation. Again, that's where I would always pull that slide and print it out and carry it around with me. So, you know, feel free to refer back and any other questions, never hesitate to contact me. So thank you all so much. Thank you again to Finance Director Nardi for her tremendous help and work and the rest of the staff. And thank you. Thank you all for doing this with me. Annie, remind me, the only thing we have left on the agenda is to adjourn, am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but I don't think we need a roll call vote. I think you can just announce an adjournment.
Oh, okay. Very well then. Then we are adjourned. And again, I thank you so much. It's good seeing you all.
Thank you.
We'll see the school committee. We'll see the school committee in the next meeting.
Committee, we have a meeting right now.
See you in a minute.
Thank you.
Goodbye, everyone.
Bye, school committee.